Regional Transportation Commission. This time is limited to comments on items included on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and state your name for the record. You'll be limited to three minutes individually for your comments, and you can't share your three minutes with another individual. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment with regards to an item on today's agenda?
I would like to.
Very good.
Good morning. Justin Jones, and our dearly beloved Mayor Cowlin Goodman, and a pioneering spirit, and lovely MJ. This is concerning item agenda number 12.
Mr. Nimrod, could you state your name, please?
I am in total agreement.
Mr. Nimrod, could you state your name first, please?
Oh, excuse me.
We all know you, but...
I understand. My name is Eric Melchizedek Christ Nimrod. You can find Nimrod in Genesis, the 10th chapter, the 6th to the 10th verse. This is concerning agenda item 12. I'm in total agreement with the 3 million new construction project. Also, the "don't walk" sign on the northwest corner of Tropicana and eastern is broken. It's doubly dangerous at night, and very strange. Also, your investment in the courtyard on Farm Master Lane is money well-invested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nimrod. Any else wishing to provide public comment on an item on today's agenda? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the first public comment period and turn it back to Ms. Maynard.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to approve the agenda. It's in order and ready for your approval.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The next item is to receive your CEO report. My little clicker is not clicking. Dave? Oh, great. Thanks. Oh, look! It is Deputy CEO Angela Castro's birthday, and we wanted to wish her a very happy birthday. You know her...
She doesn't look day over 29.
I'm going to read these words because it's so true. You know her for her intensity and drive to get things done. We all love her for it. She's amazing. Happy birthday, Angela. Okay. That's right. So first, we'd like to recognize and honor MV Transportation Mechanic David Ramos. To present this item, we have a video with Senior Director of Paratransit and Specialized Services Antonet Bralick.
Thank you, MJ. This month, we're highlighting David Ramos, a mechanic from MV Paratransit. He has been working as a mechanic with the company since 2013. David played a crucial role in leading an emergency engine rebuilding campaign this past summer to keep our paratransit fleet operating and our paratransit customers moving. Additionally, David leads the mechanics team on weekends, ensuring an efficient functioning of the shop and getting our buses back on the road promptly. David's dedication and expertise make him an invaluable team member. Let's surprise David with the recognition he deserves for this hard work and dedication. Follow me.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. Where's David? Come on over, David. On behalf of MJ Maynard and our RTC board, we are presenting you with the RTC Crystal Bus. We know that you have been integral into the, all of the builds for engines on our paratransit fleet, especially in a time when, I think as everybody knows, we have had a lot of paratransit vehicles go down because of some of the ages of the vehicles, and we needed to get those buses up and running so we could have our paratransit customers taking their trips and going to their very important appointments. So, again, on behalf of the RTC, your MV leadership, and MJ Maynard and our board, we want to thank you for all of your hard work. You're welcome.
I want to thank RTC for providing a great working environment. I want to thank Rick for giving me the shot to move up to NA to be able to do, to rebuild engines. And I want to thank the team. Without them, we wouldn't, I can't do it alone. So just thank the team.
Is David here today?
He could not make it.
Okay. All right.
I'll tell you the...
Well, thank you, David.
Yeah, mechanics are behind the scenes. We don't see them very often, but they do such great work. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to move our community without those mechanics. So, great job, David. So, in March, the RTC relaunched our Love Your Ride campaign with a week of celebrations dedicated to promoting kindness, respect, appreciation, and positive experience for transit employees and customers. During the week of events, RTC staff connected with more than 300 riders, passing out cold water, treats, and resources to promote a positive atmosphere. Just, it's a great reminder that transit and what it does for the community, again, it's part of the economic ecosystem. We are getting thousands of employees to work every day to services that they need to ensure that they have the same access and quality of life that everybody else has. So, great job. Great job to our operators, too, and the mechanics, and all of the staff that make it happen. Speaking of great staff, on March 18th, we honored the backbone of public transit for Transit Employee Appreciation Day. RTC employees and transit contractors spent the day acknowledging the dedication and hard work of drivers, dispatch team members, mechanics, security officers, officers, and maintenance crew members who play a vital role in keeping our city moving. They really are the heartbeat of what we do. Their commitment to their work goes beyond the call of duty, and their resilience, especially during challenging times, deserves not just a day of appreciation, but year-long, year-round acknowledgement. So, on behalf of the RTC, we'd like to say again, thank you to all of our transit superstars, certainly the trans dev employees, the MV employees, and marksman security employees, Silver State employees, and American Graffiti employees. Thank you for all that you do. Oh, this is so much fun when you get a big check. So I'm thrilled to share that the RTC officially received nearly $150 million in grant funding from the Federal Transit Administration for the Maryland Parkway Bus Rapid Transit Project. And I was in Washington DC a couple of days ago, and the Federal Transit Administration, on multiple occasions to large crowds, mentioned Las Vegas and mentioned the Maryland Parkway Bus Rapid Transit Project. They were very happy that we were able to receive federal funding. So it was a great shout-out for our hometown. Thanks to the leadership and tireless efforts of Congresswoman Deanna Titus, Congressman Stephen Horstford, and our federal delegation. This key transportation project will add updated transit shelters, shared bus bike lanes, widened sidewalks, and 15 new hydrogen fuel cell electric vehicles to a very busy corridor. And thank you to our own board members who helped celebrate, our Chairman Jones, Commissioner and Chair of Clark County Commission Sager Blum, Commissioner Knudsen. We appreciate the ongoing support from you and your leadership, your public work staff who make it happen, and the many residents and businesses within the project area. I'm also pleased to report the RTC is receiving $850,000 in federal funding for a safety project thanks to Congresswoman Suzy Lee. We'll use these funds to install video mirrors on our 425 fixed route buses. These video mirrors eliminate blind spots, glare, and distortion that occur with traditional mirrors. Also, they have night vision. They're really something else. Again, just an upgrade in technology. Last year, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department responded to nearly 19,000 collisions across the valley. So according to Metro, 61% of all serious pedestrian injuries and fatalities occur on dimly lit roads. Deputy CEO Angela Castro received the check, along with the City of Las Vegas Public Works Director Joey Paskey. The city is receiving $2.5 million to install more than 3,500 LED streetlights to enhance safety. So, great job, City of Las Vegas. This is a major victory for all road users. And we have one more piece of good news. We just found out this week that we were notified that we are receiving $750,000 in federal funding to complete a resilience improvement plan that assesses the vulnerabilities of our region's transportation infrastructure. Funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law, the PROTECT, and it stands for Promoting Resilient Operations for Transformative, Efficient, and Cost-Saving Transportation, provides funding to ensure service transportation resilience to natural hazards, including climate change, through support of planning activities and improvements. And again, I want to thank Congresswoman Titus for securing this funding for Southern Nevada, and a big shout-out to our grants and MPO teams for their hard work, which is a great segue into our MPO team, because now I'd like to turn this over to Andrew Kelman, who's our Senior Director of Metropolitan Planning Organization, to provide an update on our regional transportation plan.
Thank you, MJ. Andrew Kelman, Senior Director of Planning, for the record. This morning, I would like to provide an update on development of a new regional transportation plan, which is a core function of the RTC. First and foremost is what exactly is a regional transportation plan? Well, through community outreach and stakeholder engagement, the plan identifies a future vision for our transportation system over the next 25 years, and then the revenue, projects, and programs to help us achieve that vision. Federal legislation has increasingly expanded the requirements that need to be addressed in the plan, such as ensuring transportation investments are aligned with housing, economic development, and are also responsive to climate change. And longstanding planned priorities are to maintain a safe and efficient transportation system. In terms of where we are at with developing the plan, the plan must be adopted by the end of this year. This will meet federal requirements to update the plan every four years and ensure federal transportation funds continue flowing into the region. We just completed the first phase of public engagement and are currently analyzing and incorporating the feedback we receive from the public. We will also conduct two more rounds of outreach later this year, leading up to the rollout of the final plan later this year. We have also recently completed a call for projects with your local agencies' public works departments and NDOT, and we are currently gathering additional details about the submitted For public engagement, the first round ended just a little over a week ago. There were two objectives we wanted to achieve with this outreach. First, we simply wanted to raise awareness about the plan and provide information to the public about the role plan, the role the plan plays in their everyday lives as they move around the region and during their commutes. We accomplished this by reaching over 114,000 people through e-blasts, social media, and in-person outreach events. And on this slide, here's a picture of the virtual public meeting room that was heavily visited, so it allowed the public to virtually walk around the meeting room to these boards and learn more about the plan. The second purpose of the outreach effort was to gather feedback on what the public views as the region's biggest transportation challenges, and then also ask them, what is their preferred vision for future, for the future of transportation in Southern Nevada? We gathered over 4,000 surveys, and in terms of what's most important, there are some differences to what we've seen in the past. Safety, which is number one here, is commonly top of mind, but in terms of new priorities, we see that transit, roadway maintenance, and construction, special event coordination, are higher in importance than we've seen before. And this makes sense, just based on regional developments over the past few years. This slide also shows the importance of minimizing traffic congestion, and this issue typically ranks high with the public. However, one new question that we asked this year was how should projects in the regional transportation plan be prioritized that minimize congestion? This slide shows that the highest priority for most respondents was more alternatives to driving, followed by enhanced signal timing, and then finally, additional lanes for automobile traffic. And in terms of who took the survey, we made sure to match regional conditions in terms of race, age, and income. So, these findings will be rolled up into the plan to help us develop a preferred vision of the future, and they will also immediately be put to use as we evaluate projects for federal funding. So now, about those projects. As a result of the call for projects that we just completed, we received 120 total projects submitted. We are still finalizing some of the details for these projects, so that number may change slightly as we move forward, but we received 91 projects from local agency public works departments, 17 RTC-sponsored projects, those are transit investments, and 12 projects from NDOT. However, it's important to note that the types of projects that need to be included in the plan as we move forward. First, any regionally significant project must be included. These are typically larger projects on major roads, so think NDOT interchange projects or additional lanes on the Clark County Beltway. These projects need to be included regardless of their funding source, so federal, state, or local. Second, the plan must include any project that has already received federal funding. This includes buses purchased by the RTC using FTA funds, Maryland Parkway BRT, which is now an FTA-funded project, and projects that have discretionary grant funds, like the City of Las Vegas's project on Stewart Avenue. Finally, the plan will also include projects that are requesting federal funding through the Metropolitan Planning Organization. In this role, the RTC receives Federal Highway Administration funding for regional prioritization, and this dollar amount is about $80 million a year that comes to the MPO for prioritization. So, to select projects for funding, we are not allowed to distribute federal funds based on a simple distribution formula. Rather, we evaluate each project individually before awarding funding. We analyze anticipated project benefits related to safety, congestion, maintenance, multimodal connectivity, air quality, and equity. For prioritization, we use a performance-based process that has been reviewed by FHWA and your local public works departments. As a region, we are required to track 18 transportation performance measures, and so first, we calculate the benefits of each individual project, and then prioritize those for funding that will best help our region achieve these targets. And finally, for next steps, we will continue to evaluate projects, and we, when we have a draft funding recommendation to share, we will, we will report back to this board. We will also conduct, we will also continue with our planned outreach efforts later this summer and into the fall. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelman. Any questions from the board? Councilman?
Thank you very much, Sean. I appreciate the presentation. I had two questions on, on the statements you made. The, the second question that I'll ask is related to, to the data, and I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't have it, but the, the demographic data and the, the income levels, do you see differences in people's expectations of transit based on income levels?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you. Definitely, the priorities of what people desire and want out of their transportation system are heavily related to income and automobile access.
And the, I'm trying to think of the slide. If you go back a few slides, it had the, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out how to say the question. More alternatives to driving, that's the question. On demographic data, data related to more alternatives to driving, are you able to drill down and see who's expecting what?
Yeah, we can definitely provide that information.
Okay. Thanks. I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just find it really interesting to see people's expectations of transit based on how much money they make. And then the second question is, you mentioned that we calculate benefits on each project. I'm curious, what goes into that calculation?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you. So, yeah, first is getting as much project information as we can, and then we're developing a project benefits calculator that looks at benefits related to crash reductions, serious injuries or fatality reductions, travel time benefits, and then also, we can calculate the air quality benefits of different projects.
Do you include, are you able to include the development opportunities around transit and what it does for the private businesses on, on the roads, basically?
Um, that's a very good question. We can dig further into that, but one of the things about projects that are located in those transit-dense environments is that we will see greater benefits of that project. So, through increased transit ridership or reduce costs so you don't have to own and operate a vehicle. So, we, we can capture those benefits as part of the evaluation process.
I think it's one of the most interesting parts of my job, at least, when we're talking about transit-oriented development, is the cities, for, for example, the medical district, the city's investing a whole bunch of money in, and with support from the RTC and everybody else, into making the public roadways more accessible, and then it's encouraging private development. And so I think it helps if we're able to incorporate that language into why we go after federal funds to build out the roadways and help bring in private developers in the conversation as well. I appreciate the data. Thank you.
Other questions? I, I had a question. Can we, one, can we get a list of all the projects that have been proposed by each of the jurisdictions? I do think it's interesting that each of the jurisdictions, and I won't speak to my colleagues, but I don't know what projects are proposed from, from my jurisdiction. I think that's something that probably my colleague, Commissioner Sager Blum, and I might want to know about, so we can prioritize them internally. And then, the other thing is, certainly there are projects that are cross-jurisdictional. Charleston is one of those that certainly is of that importance, Maryland Parkway. In, in terms of the ranking, does that come into play when there are projects that are cross-jurisdictional, like Boulder Highway, like Maryland Parkway?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, yeah. So, projects that support local agency plans and have a regional transportation impact, yes, those can be rated higher.
Okay. All right. Any other question? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Just, you know, in speaking with the folks of the FTA and just the USDOT, they have stated that your, your competitive ranking increases by regionalism. And so, we, we know that when we, when we submit a grant that includes more than just one city, for example, we have a better chance of getting that grant. Thanks, Andrew. Great job. So, next, Deputy CEO David Swallow is going to provide you with your quarterly update on the progress of our roadway funding, including fuel tax and sales tax.
Okay. Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Swallow, Deputy CEO, for the record. I'd like to begin our third quarter update, roadway funding update, by sharing a total of the projects that have been contracted since fuel revenue indexing was implemented, beginning in 2014. You can see a total of 658 roadway, roadway projects that have been started, 439 of those completed. These projects are made possible by all local funding sources, including fuel revenue indexing, motor vehicle fuel tax, and sales tax. As of today, as you see on the chart here, we have 115 projects that are in design, as well as 104 that are under construction. When you look at the total dollars that have been allocated between fuel tax and sales tax, about $2.3 billion in roadway contracts are supported by fuel taxes, with another $331 million with sales tax. When we look at the total contracts under, when we say under, under contract, that means we have interlocal contracts with each of the, of the jurisdictions. To date, as of the third quarter for fiscal year '24, the total revenues are more than $2.4 billion, with total contract amounts of $2.6 billion and expenditures of about $1.9 billion. RTC and the local agencies, of course, are working diligently to deliver projects and invest the money back into the community as quickly as possible, and to ensure we have a well-maintained roadway network. More importantly, you look at the job impacts, and these are direct, indirect, or induced jobs. And since FRI was initiated in the beginning of 2014, we estimate that to be over 18,000 jobs that have been supporting, been supported by our roadway funding program. As we do every quarter, I'd like to highlight some of the projects, just noteworthy projects that were completed. These projects highlight how our partner agencies and contractors are using critical roadway funding to improve mobility, enhance safety, and maintain the valley's roadway network. The first one I'd like to highlight is in Clark County on Elkhorn Road between Tenaya Way and Jones Boulevard. This was, this project involved widening the pavement on each side of the road to two lanes, along with construction of a center median with left-turn lane for traffic, traffic control in each direction. There were also buffered bike lanes that were added, along with new pavement markings, signage, and intelligent transportation system conduits, so that in the future, whenever we want to run fiber optic or other devices in the area, we have this infrastructure in place to make it easy to install. This project wrapped up in February with a total cost of approximately $5.7 million. Another noteworthy project, and I'm sure to the relief of many, was the city completing Las Vegas Boulevard between Stewart Avenue and Sahara Avenue. This was a critically important project, as it involved widening sidewalks, installing new street lighting and signage, adding ADA-accessible ramps. New pavement was installed, along with curbs and gutters. Underground intelligent transportation system infrastructure was also improved. Many historic signs were restored and trees planted along the streets and sidewalks to provide shade, enhance air quality, and visually enrich the area. These upgrades aim to enhance safety, accessibility, as well as resilience in our infrastructure and for our community. The project wrapped up in January at a total cost of approximately $107.7 million. Given the amount of things we have to talk about today, I just want to highlight here a lot of the projects that are also completed. Too many to go through, but you can see here, in Clark County, we had Rainbow Boulevard from Erie to Blue Diamond Road. This one, full-depth reconstruction and widening of Rainbow Boulevard, including ADA improvements, street lighting and storm drain system, and traffic signal modifications, along with striping and signage. This wrapped up in December with a total cost of $8.1 million. There's also a number of various roadway projects that you see here, both in the county, along with those that are in design with the city of North Las Vegas, Mesquite, and Boulder City. And with that, that concludes our quarterly report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions? Mayor?
You do better than I do through you, Mr. Chairman. All right. How are we looking forward to the sunset of the fuel revenue tax, and what are we doing about that going forward?
Yeah, it's a very important note. So, for everyone's benefit, when FRI was initiated, it was a three-year pilot program, and then was brought to the voters to look at an extension. Thankfully, the community voted to invest back into our community with a 10-year extension. That extension expires at the end of 2026, so we will need to go to a ballot for that to be extended any further. I'd like to highlight that...
Or the legislature?
Correct.
However you see fit, Mr. Chairman. But, but it's really important to note that we do have a robust program right now. Our current program's about $2.2 billion. When I say program, I mean our 10-year capital improvement program. That being said, that program does not include any extension of fuel revenue indexing. So, each year, we're going to continue to see the amount available go down as projects are being constructed and delivered to the community, but at the same time, we do need to be mindful of the, the future roadway maintenance needs, as well as growth of our community, so...
If I might continue on that question through you. What can we, the public, do to help push this along and keep it alive? It's so incredible. We're used to that tax being in place, and we've learned how to live with it, and it's not a huge amount to each of us, but really, what can we, the average individual, be doing?
Well, first, I think it's important that everyone, if, if you have concerns about roadways, to communicate through you and the rest of the elected officials that represent your respective, whether you're in a ward or a district. It's important to do that. The other thing is to be mindful of any kind of issues that you see that we need to focus on in terms of repair and maintenance. Feel free to, to call the RTC, or again, your respective, whether it's the cities or the county. Finally, as elected leaders, I think it's important that we provide the information you need to make decisions. But clearly, looking forward, we have been very successful with the delivery of projects to date, and to ensure the, the continued growth of our community, growth in a smart way, that we connect and enhance our roadway network, we are going to need more funding because the... We are going to need more funding, because the, the funding we're using is great for, for building projects, but as we build projects, we need to be mindful of the future maintenance of those projects to ensure we have-
Yeah, and Mayor, you, you should know that we'll be, actually, uh, we just presented our transportation funding model presentation to the Clark County Commission, and now we're going to be coming to your jurisdictions, to your councils, to let you know that if the fuel revenue indexing program does not continue, that by the end of the capital improvement program, uh, we anticipate having only about $75 to $100 million per year that would have to be split among all the jurisdictions. And so it will take potential work at the, at the next legislative session, uh, that could include enabling legislation, potentially, you know, having got to a ballot. But we'll work with all of you first, as we put together our legislative priorities, to make sure that you're good with that. But we are going to get on your calendars and, and to present that to, to all of you, to all of your respective councils.
Well, if I could add to that, too, it's really as individuals in this entire area, we need to stand strong on making sure this does continue, because of all the successful projects that are there, and we've learned to live with the fuel revenue tax as it's been. And so once you lose something, there's a hole that has to be filled by funding, and now it will be a reintroduction of some new way to have each resident pay something new, which never works, always is controversial. And I think the RTC, from that fuel revenue tax, has done a remarkable job. And even though we all hate our, our city flower, our county and Southern Nevada flower that's everywhere, I figure that all the construction is due to the fact, get everything done by 2026, when this fuel revenue tax moves on and sunsets, unless the legislature and our governor see a way to keep it alive. So thank you very much, and thank you for the report.
And, and just to put a even finer point on it, it's not just the loss of the revenue that the RTC takes in, it's also the loss of opportunity to go after the federal grants, because they all require a match.
That is a great point. And I heard that when I was in DC, was told that the, the communities that have that federal match or have that, that sustainable funding source are the ones that are going to get the federal dollars. They expect us to come to the table with money, and then they'll provide that, that opportunity. So that's an excellent point.
Yep. All right. Councilman Newton?
Yeah. I was also going to just point out, I, I think it's important for us to, I think about this all the time, is if we do lose that revenue source, then we're going to be in positions where we have to advocate for our individual cities or county for that roadway construction funding, for that maintenance funding, and we're going to be in an RTC position where we're going to be trying to advocate for transit. And putting us in that position is, is not fair to us, and it's not fair to our constituents. And so to the extent that all of our jurisdictions are able to get behind a, a funding formula that meets everybody's needs, we're all going to have to work really hard to make sure that happens. And it, it affects everyone in Southern Nevada.
Councilman Wallace?
If, if by chance that funding did go away after 2026, how bad would it cut transit in the city of Las Vegas? Do, do you have any idea what percentage of transit would have to go away?
So we have, when I talk about the transportation funding model, we have a, a transit funding deficit that I've been sharing with, with all of you for the last few years. Uh, and so that just by itself, uh, if we're not able to find a sustainable funding source for transit, uh, we are, and it's a problem today that will be a crisis in the future. Uh, it has, we have a significant deficit in our transit fund. In terms of roadways, normally, you, what you find, uh, the, the use of FRI, it's the infrastructure around transit, not, not necessarily paying for transit, but it'll, you know, it'll have an impact on, on, on the opportunity to any project.
In other words, we have two separate problems we've got to solve, and we know how to solve one of them. The other one, we've got a lot of work to do on transit. Okay. Commissioner?
Just to follow up on the mayor's comment about any time you see somebody mention this, um, every time you see the governor, remind him that he vetoed the bill and that fuel indexing is on the top of everybody's minds. So just, when you see the governor, just, and we all see him on a daily basis, just remind him that he needs to hopefully-
Maybe not remind him that he vetoed it, just think positive and remind him how important it is. Right, Mr. Gomez?
Just, just whisper, "Fuel indexing, fuel indexing."
Mayor, Art?
Thank you. Obviously, every single entity will benefit from the fuel tax indexing. Boulder City has got to be probably the poster child of what happened with transportation that saved the city in so many different ways, uh, with I-11, for instance. And so I don't see an entity that isn't going to be, uh, part of that united front of being able to say, "All of we have voters. All of we drive cars or go in a bus." Um, so I think we can say, as a united group, uh, not just here, but in our individual entities, that that's what we want. That's where we need to be and, and not go backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Very good. Councilman Shaw?
Just a reminder, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, we have a twofold problem, not only our roadways, but, but also our transit. And we're going to, as a body, need to be creative to help MJ and her staff come up with ways to increase our revenue side, uh, on transit, or it's not going to work.
Yep. Very good. Ms. Mayor?
Thank you. That concludes your CEO report, and the next item on the agenda is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report. It is, uh, today, it's Deputy Director Mario Gomez.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez?
Morning, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present, uh, Mario Gomez, Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance, for the record. Wanted to start with a promotion that helps fill in the gaps in our front office. Uh, Joe Harrington has been appointed as the NDOT Director of Communications and Government Affairs. Uh, Joe comes to us from Florida, where he led public communications for the International Airport and one of the state's largest transit, paratransit, and paratransit providers. He is relocating back to Nevada, uh, having lived in the Silver State for 11 years. Uh, he's held the position of Public Information Officer for the RTC of Washoe County and worked with NDOT as a partner on several projects, including the Pyramid and McCarran Intersection Improvement Project, Spaghetti Bowl Improvements, and planning for the future I-11. His experience includes 10 years as a television journalist, much of that time he spent at Reno's Kolo TV. Another promotion is our new District One Engineer, Martin Strigannik, uh, originally from West Virginia. Martin graduated from West Virginia University with a Bachelor's of Science degree in civil engineering. Uh, soon after, Martin moved to Las Vegas and worked as, for a civil engineering firm as a quality inspector and roadway designer. In 2009, he was hired by NDOT as a resident engineer. Uh, notable, notable projects include the first, uh, bridge slide in the department's history on the Mesquite Design Build, and also worked on Project Neon. In 2020, Martin became the Assistant District Engineer prior to his recent promotion. So congratulations to Martin. Please meet our new Assistant Director of Planning, Rebecca Capular. Uh, Rebecca most recently worked as the Assistant Chief of Multimodal Planning, where she led active transportation projects that included programs such as safe routes to school, pedestrians and bicycle safety and education, and the Transportation Alternatives Set-A-Side Program. Rebecca has had an extensive background working in multimodal transportation and planning in Northern Nevada. Uh, she's also had more than 24 years of experience with government agencies at the local, regional, and state levels. And, uh, we certainly look forward to working with her and filling in our front office organizational chart and even further. And so with that, uh, with these promotions and new hires, we are filling in the squares. Um, on the bottom level, we have two vacancies still left. Uh, one admin assistant is scheduled to begin, the interviews are scheduled to begin on April 15th, and interviews, uh, for the other will occur, uh, later this week, to try to fill in the last two vacancies that we have, uh, within the front office at the department. So while safety is important all the time, we have to emphasize that every death on Nevada roads is a tragedy, and a loved, and a loved one will not be coming home. Uh, the reason for this slide is that we have had a rough start to 2024. Uh, we've lost 58 lives in fatal crashes, uh, 27 pedestrians killed statewide, a 32% increase in fatalities from same time last year. Uh, 97 students have been hit by vehicles on their way to and from school since the beginning of the 2023-2024 school year. This is 60% increase from the same time last year. Nevada's ultimate goal is zero fatalities on Nevada roads by 2050. Nevada has seen many safety improvements on our roadways, due in large to part, in large part to the six E's of traffic safety, which include equity, engineering, enforcement, education, emergency response, and everyone. And so the key here is everyone, uh, we all have a role to play, and the ultimate safety of users is our shared responsibility. National Work Safety Awareness Week is April 15th through the 19th. Uh, there were 1,863 crashes on Nevada work zones last construction season, and this is statewide from October 2022 to October, 2022 to October 2023. Sorry about that. Uh, that's roughly 3% of all crashes statewide. Uh, the percentage is not large, but motorists driving unsafely in work zones has potentially, has a potential catastrophic injury or death to our workers. Um, safety is our top priority, and we continually advance our work zone safety efforts. Uh, so we have, uh, work zone traffic control planning, a work zone traffic control planning process to provide for the utmost work zone visibility and safety. Uh, we also have, uh, smart work zone signage with dynamic traffic queue information in some work zones. Driver behavior is a critical component of work zone safety. Uh, we also use the National Work Zone Safety Awareness Week to remind everyone to be safe in all of our work zones. We do that through the regular media, social media, and even more. Specifically, we have joined with the Nevada Highway Patrol and local transportation agencies to develop a press release and host media availability, as well as social media to raise awareness. Other events around the state are planned by law enforcement agencies, as well as the Traffic Incident Management Coalition, which is better known as TMS. And so with that, uh, that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking with us. Any, uh, questions or comments? I just want to say thank you. I know, uh, NDOT representatives were out in the field with our Director of Traffic Safety, Andrew Bennett, a week or so ago, and I think that was very helpful in helping everyone understand that although we typically think of NDOT roads as our larger freeways, highways, et cetera, many of the, uh, roads that we drive on every single day here in Southern Nevada, um, are not city or county roads, but rather NDOT roads, and that, um, collaboration, coordination, when it comes to, uh, traffic safety is, is really important when we, when we go through those exercises.
Thank you. The next item, uh, Commissioner's to approve your consent agenda, which consists of Items 5 through 44 and can be taken in one motion.
Very good. Honored to have a motion. All right. There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, uh, Agenda 45 is to receive a presentation on the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025, and direct the RTC Department of Finance to submit the tentative budget to the Nevada Department of Taxation by April 15th, 2024. And our Director of Finance, Senior Director of Finance, Sherwin Gutierrez, will give you that presentation.
MJ?
Oh. It's working. Good morning, Chairman Jones and, uh, members of the board. Sherwin John Gutierrez, Senior Director of Finance, for the record, and I'm here to present the fiscal year 2025, uh, budget. So for fiscal year 2025, our total funding sources is $1.1 billion. This $1.1 billion is for all the services that our agency provides, from transit, planning, uh, to our, uh, roadway funding and for our FAST projects. So out of the $1.1 billion, sales tax is $327.3 million, or 30% of the total budget. Fuel taxes at $230.1 million, or 21% of our total budget. Grants is at $201.2 million, or 18.8% of our total budget, and bond proceeds at $196.7 million, or 18% of our total budget. Our next slide is our sales and use tax revenue for fiscal year 2024. We are projecting, uh, $318 million for, uh, for that period, and we are budgeting for fiscal year 2025, $327 million. The three, uh, the, for fiscal year 2024, that represents a 3% increase from fiscal year 2023. Fiscal year to date, we have received about 3.28%. In terms of 2025, uh, we, uh, collaborate with our member jurisdiction. They are budgeting about 3.3%. We are at the 3% ratio. Uh, wanting to note, the increase in sales and use tax revenue will be offset by inflationary increases in our contracted services and supply costs, which will be, uh, reflected on the expense side. Next is our fuel tax revenue for MBFT, jet aviation, or FRI I and FRI II. So for fiscal year 2024, we are projecting $214.6 million, and for fiscal year 2025, we are budgeting $230.1 million. While we have seen an increase in FRI extension due to inflationary increases, MBFT revenue remained flat from 2016 to 2025. Uh, while we also have, we have also seen a continuous decrease in the gallons sold since 2022, and, uh, our fuel tax assumptions reflected on this slide is consistent with the roadway funding model that was presented to each and every one of you.
And, and just to put a finer point in it from earlier today, if you take away FRI out of this going forward past 2026, then you drop down to the $70 million that's listed there for motive your school fuel tax?
Um, we will continue to receive that $74 million. We're not, we're just not going to receive the increases. Normally, the 57 to 74, those are incremental increases based on our producer price index. So that's about, I would say, a $17 million increase. So it will be flat.
Okay.
This may not be the time for this question, but let's assume that that happens and stays flat, and we have used that fuel indexing, I'm assuming, in calculating our bonding capacity and ability to bond. Does that put us in jeopardy of violating any current covenants with our current bonds, because our debt service ratio drops?
We, we are consistently, uh, when we do our bonding, we want to make sure that we have enough capacity. We have our ABT, our, uh, additional bonds test, which is 1.5%. We typically do our, uh, uh, ABT at 2%, so we have capacity there. And in addition to that, we also have 100% of, of bond reserve to, for any, uh, future, uh, decreases in our revenue.
So, so none of our bonds have debt service ratios that will be in violation if we don't receive that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the, the thing is, though, with discontinuation of FRI, the increases, as Sherwin mentioned, we will tap out, we do plan to max out our bonding capacity.
Right.
So there won't be a lot of bonding capacity going forward.
Right. Okay.
I just want to make sure we're not in violation going forward with what we've currently got.
Thank you. So for our next slide, let's talk about our FY 2025 transit funding sources. We are budgeting $491.1 million, sales tax at $245.5 million, or 50% of our total budget. Capital grants at 100.105.1 million, or 21.4% of our total budget. Fares at 59.4 million, or 12.1% of our total budget. Our general market and strip corridor fare revenue, uh, we are projecting 59.4 million for fiscal year 2024, and we are budgeting, uh, 59.4 million for fiscal year 2025. Now we go to our funding uses. So for fiscal year 2025, our total funding uses is $1.1 billion. Capital outlay will be $572.6 million, or 51.9% of our total budget. This is mainly used for our roadway, uh, projects. Uh, the next one is our contracted services at 365, 67.5 million, or 33.3% of our total budget. This is mainly used for our transit, uh, contracted services, to pay for all of those services. Uh, next is our, uh, debt service at 102.6 million, uh, or 9.3% of our total budget. This is used to pay all of our outstanding bond obligations that are for roadway projects. And the last is our salaries and benefits at 59.7 million, or 5.5% of our total budget. Our fiscal year 2025 capital outlay, 446.2 million goes to our roadway projects that is distributed amongst our member jurisdiction. Uh, transit will receive 122.5 million, or 21% of our total capital budget. For our roadway projects funding spend, for fiscal year 2024, we are projecting to, uh, spend, uh, 298 million, and, uh, for fiscal year 2025, we are budgeting 446 million. And out of that 446 million, $130 million is for Maryland Parkway. And with that, that $130 million we are receiving, uh, we are receiving reimbursement of $83.2 And with that, that $130 million we are receiving, we are receiving reimbursement of $83.2 million from our, from the F D A. We have received that $150 million, and that will be spent or reimbursed over the next two years of the project. For fiscal year 2025 transit funding uses, we are budgeting 491.1 million. Contracted services is 324.4 million, or 66% of the total budget. Capital outlay at 122.5 million, or 24.9% of the total budget. Salaries and benefits at 26.2 million, or 5.4% of the total budget. And transfers to our admin at 18 million, or 3.7 million of our total budget. So our fixed route contract cost, we are projecting our expenditure to be at 156.2 million for fiscal year 2024, and we are budgeting for fiscal year 2025, 171.5 million. The increase from fiscal year 23 to 24 was mainly due to our new contract. We did a competitively bid contract, which started July 1 of 2023. All bids came in higher, which is due to our inflationary cost, and we also seen costs of doing business have sharply increased during that period. And for fiscal year 2025, we are adding service enhancements due to $2.5 million that we have received from the less legislation, legislation. And service enhancement will depend on available labor workforce. So for our paratransit contract cost, we are projecting 52.9 million for fiscal year 2024, and we are budgeting 54.8 million for fiscal year 2025. Our fiscal year to date increase in ridership, it's about 11.6% from 23 to 24.
If I could insert a little bit on that paratransit contract cost, we do, Item 29 on the agenda was a new amendment to our paratransit contract. We do anticipate in our final budget that will be presented in May, that cost in '25, '24 and '25 will increase due to that amendment. We anticipate that to be in '25, about 10.3, 10.4 million dollar increase. So you'll see that next month.
That's over and above the numbers you have.
Yeah, that's over and above the numbers that we have here in this chart.
Okay. So next is our transit security cost for fiscal year 2024. We are projecting 17.36 million, and we are budgeting 23.16 million for fiscal year 2025. For fiscal year 2024, we can, we thank the board for approving amendments to increase the number of officers and increasing the number of security vehicles. For fiscal year 2025, we all, we are also increasing the number of security, armed security officers, and this also reflects the new competitively bid contract, which starts July 1 of 2024. We are continuously adding resources to provide a safe transit system for our passengers and to the drivers. Next slide is our transit net fuel cost. We are projecting fiscal year 2024 at 15.2 million, and we are budgeting fiscal year 2025 at 15.79 million. This is net of revenues that we're receiving from the alternative excise tax credit, which is about $5 million from the IRS, and then our renewable natural gas credit in partnership with Southwest Gas and U.S. Energy of $1.2 million. Next is our transit capital budget. We, we are budgeting 122.5 million. Out of that 122.5 million, we are projecting 105.1 million, receiving through a combination of several grant funding, through discretionary grants and formula grants. And us, out of that 122.5 million, 62.5 million is to replace our fleet. We normally replace them as they reach their useful life, and we want to make sure we have those safe, reliable vehicles on our roadways. And we also plan facilities upgrade of 16.1 million, and then bus shelter and safety enhancement of 17.7 million, and technology upgrades of 17.7 million dollars. So.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I'm back, if I may.
Mayor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I can't let go of this fuel revenue crisis that's out there. You mentioned roadways. How, to what level, if it flattens out and this is not moved forward, what is the impact and what happens with the roadways that we are responsible for?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mayor Goodman.
Nobody needs to go through me. I'm just talking.
Sure. So one of the things that I think is important to note, you saw that over the past handful of years, we've continued to see a decrease in the taxable gallons sold of gas. So the volume of gas, even though we continue to grow as a community and we have more cars, the volume of gas being sold is going down. With a flat tax, that means it continues to go down. With the indexing, if it were to flatten out, would also continue to go down. And that doesn't, when you compound in the inflation, which, you know, 3, 3.5%, recent years, it was much more dramatic, but just, I'd say on average, 3, 3.5% inflation, we're losing that buying power to be able to maintain our roadways. And I, you know, we've spent billions of dollars literally to invest in the roadway network, and I think we all want to ensure that it, that we preserve that investment.
And if I may continue on the question, I mean, you used the word crisis, and I do see that. Electric vehicles, I don't think the state has come to any realization as how the electric vehicle pays its fair share of the roadways. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
And, I mean, this really, we can't wait. This is, this is 2025. You've worked so diligently on, there has to be something. And listening to my colleagues up here, I mean, I know we all feel it. It is, and you can't wait till the last minute, it's too late. So how about the electric vehicles, and what's the state doing with their fair share?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Commissioner, to Mayor Goodman. Angela Castro for the-
We're going to keep doing its protocol.
Angela Castro, for the record, you are correct. And I will say that NDOT has convened a smaller group. The conversation is continuing from the legislature now into the smaller working group with industry and a few other people at the table, trying to figure out what that looks like. I will say this, from the legislature's perspective, whether you are Republican or Democrat, and all of the briefings that we've been in, if we are going to be able to get an extension of fuel revenue indexing, or if we are going to be able to even get to a ballot for fuel, for fuel revenue indexing, we have to address the parity of the electric vehicles. So we are on it. It is a conversation that we're having from a community perspective, and I do anticipate some form of legislation coming forward.
And I'm asking, and I will turn to you, Mr. Chairman, is there a voice of this body with the permission of our C E O here to make a very strong statement? I think this, you, that word crisis, I see that, and it needs to be out there for every single person who lives here, travels through here, knows about it. The roads that we're resurfacing right now around town that are driving us all crazy have to be done by '26. Because from then on, how long does it take roadways to fall apart, become dangerous, and so much usage, and our climate, I mean, the effects of the dry area, and the occasional huge rains and flood, everything? So I don't know if it's appropriate, and would ask all of us through you as chair to be a voice, a strong voice on this, is not a time to play around.
I think definitely we should, we should talk about what exactly it looks like, but I would say if, the last legislative session, the, the extension really kind of came up in the middle of session, wasn't originally pushed by the R T C. This time around, we will lead that effort 100%. And so I think going into the session, every single jurisdiction on, on this, on this board needs to have one unified voice, whether that's a common letter that we all sign on to, or whatever it looks like. I'll leave that to the experts on that, but I 100% agree.
So I mean, the voice, and for anybody, I don't know if you're recorded and live-streamed, I mean, it's open meeting law, so I just hope somebody from the media will talk about the truth of this issue and not play games anymore. We can't afford to see the fuel revenue tax die and sunset, nor can we see electric vehicle participation in the roadways, as well as everything else that our dollar does. So as part of all of this, please move it forward, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, whatever direction you need, Mr.-
And Mayor Goodman and Chairman Jones, you are correct. You know, as the regional roadway funding agency, we, we must take a position. And so, and it will take collaboration from all jurisdictions. So again, we will brief you before we put together our final itinerary for the 2025 legislative session with your, with your, you know, direction of approval.
Yep. And just one other forum is the Southern Nevada Forum, which I know you're very familiar with, Mayor, as, as another place where we can push this agenda to make sure it's a priority coming out of the Southern Nevada Forum.
And, and to make it now, not push it out so far. The voice needs to be now.
Yep.
Now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I learned this from one of your colleagues on the county commission, and I think about it every time I'm driving in the medical district with all those orange cones, they're driving me absolutely crazy. Every single orange cone equals a job out there.
That's right.
I like it.
And so that, that's something that we should all be very proud of, is all those orange cones are putting food on, on, on tables and putting kids through school, and we need to make sure there's more of them.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
What Councilman Canuson said, so true. So Commissioner, the next time-
I'm sorry, could I ask one other question about the budget? Do we know what percent of the total budget is grants?
Yes, Commissioner, we have 18% of our total budget is coming from grants. That's a combination of discretionary grants and formula grants.
So 20, almost 20%, which, so thanks to the staff, that's, that's really where you guys come into play. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I guess we'll, we'll need a move.
Sorry. We will need a, a motion to approve the 2024-2025 budget.
So move to approve the 2025 budget.
Yep. Very good. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is to receive information on the May 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting, and as we do every year, we move that meeting to the third Thursday for the, to present the final budget to you, and so we're looking for approval to do that.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to move the May meeting from May 9th to the 23rd.
So move.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, just going to let this board know, that's also the Health District Meeting Day, and so Commissioner Seggerblum and I may need to figure out who's in which meeting.
Very good.
You can go to the Health District.
You drew the short straw. We love you, Health District. All right. Motion on the floor. All, do we vote? Yes. All is in favor?
Yes, vote.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. Next item is to receive legal counsel. We have nothing to discuss this month, so we'll go on to your final agenda, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
This is the second tide set aside for public comment. Anyone who have, wishing to provide public comment with regards to any matter before the Regional Transportation Commission, please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Those who provide public comment are limited to their three minutes and cannot share three minutes with other individuals. Well, that's a first. I will go ahead and close the second public comment period, and we are adjourned.
Wow. Didn't ever happen.